Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for joining us. This is the Aspen City Council Work Session for October, what are we, like, 21st or something like that?
Wow.
Unbelievable. And of course, we are...
Is your mic on?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll say it once again, thank you for joining us, everybody. This is the Aspen City Council Work Session for October 21. Wow, oh my gosh, I said it all again. We, of course, are in budget season, so with that, no further ado, let's get going.
All right. You, Mayor and Council, like you said, we have Budget Sessions on October 21st, or we get into tonight's departments. Was there additional questions after digesting last week's material? We do have a couple follow-up slides following this, but...
Any additionals? We did have, yes, there are some outstanding questions that are denoted here in the packet for us, but anything come up after the fact? Okay. Thank you.
First item for additional discussion, lumberyard affordable housing project. Council may wish to further discuss development partners involved in Phase Zero, or as Rob so elegantly put it last weekend, "Now was the time to pause on that." It is currently assumed that the city will be leading Phase Zero in our 2025 capital budget. And then Bike Skills Trail Project, lively discussion. Again, currently, 2025 assumes that the city will lead this project in the proposed location along the border of the Moralt property. Is there any further direction at this time?
Oh, yeah, I don't know that that's going to maintain or was maintained.
I want to go back to the first topic, the, you know, a huge increase in, three times what it was originally projected to be, but 53% of those additional scopes were vet and approved by this and previous city councils. So 47% are construction, and some of that construction, I think, was because of CDOT and some other items. So although a lot has been made over triple the cost of the original estimate, I would, at some point here, like to see all of the increases in scope that my council, or the others, and other members on this council from time to time have approved, and so the public can see why the costs are so much more than they were originally projected to be. And I think when we approve Phase Zero, that we, that there is an RFP process going forward for vertical construction. And I'm comfortable with, not comfortable, but with the amount of increases, but I'd like to see it proceed without any further investigations, virtual partners for Phase Zero.
Questions that were going to come back to us regarding that? Are those, is any additional information going to be brought back to us about that? In specific, I had some questions that asked about the RFQ versus RFP process, whether there was any ability for savings in bringing in a partner at this time, or if those savings were not real dollar savings, if it just be amortized over a project, et cetera, et cetera?
This is Mayor Tom Kristof, Public Works Director. Yes, we heard council's questions at the last session, and staff is planning to return to council, I think hastily, with a contract for Phase Zero demolition. At that time, council can consider some of the questions about proceeding with Phase Zero as its currently scope, or bringing in a development partner. As for questions about value engineering, we are happy to revisit council. We figured that a work session might be most appropriate for what that might look like. As we forward with the RFP for vertical construction, we figured that that's probably the most appropriate place for value engineering on projects. So to give you a time, I believe, your first November, you'll see that contract for Phase Zero demolition. And then after that, we would approach council with the RFP, recommendations from the RFP for construction, and how we should proceed.
Thank you for that. Anything else on this top item, lumberyard? And then, when it comes to parks and open space, let's see, we had only four members present last time. There were two that spoke for an alternate location and not support for the Moralt property. And then there was, I think, one that was in support of the Moralt property. And then I think maybe Sam, did you have some additional questions about the Bike Skills Trail project? Or did you, were you supportive of it in its location? Or did you want the investigation of the other locations? Where were you with that?
I just wanted it to be an action item to be, discussion could be had on it. And yeah, I mean, what you just asked, alternative locations is room after, just so we know all our options as far as saying yes or no to this location. But also happy keeping it in the budget for now, because I do think if it even if it's a SCICO profit of our park's own space, it'd still be a good use of our money to have a Bike Skills Park and not have it be at a location that's not desirable.
Did we move forward with that on as an action item for discussion?
No, there were not three of you.
We're not for that request. So, John, we did want your input on this, and I can reiterate my view if anybody wants. I actually had some more questions around this, but I don't think we saw in our presentation any recommendations from open space and trails. Austin, and did open space and trails members have an opportunity to discuss this project?
Austin Weiss, Parks and Rec Director, yes, the Open Space and Trails Board met in July to discuss and to make a recommendation to the city council on this project. They did vote to recommend approval for the project.
Remember that vote, how many were four, how many were against?
We had four members there, and it was four zero.
Four men out of?
Well, that included the alternate, sort of, six, including the alternate.
You know, what I said last time that we looked at this is that I thought that the density for that Bike Skills Park was a great graphic, but I just thought that it was sandwiched into a really tight envelope right there, surrounded on both sides by roads. I don't think that the, I don't think that the city should move forward with that as a location at this time. And I would hate to signal that we want to do that through the budget process, but we didn't hear from Don, so I do want to hear from John, and we can figure out if that stays in the budget at that location.
So, my feelings on the budget, I recognize that this is something I think the community needs and wants. I think I'd like to look at other options for a solution, because I think Moralt is under a lot of increased scrutiny and pressure now. And I think this would be a good opportunity to look at other sites.
Thank you. Sam?
I just wanted to add, supports your decision, I think I was about to say, to park space members, keep their opinions after this meeting, if you want. You can discuss that.
I don't believe they gave it after. I believe that they were not present for the vote, but they had sufficient ahead of time. They're unable to vote, because this particular board does not allow remote voting, and voted against the location based upon that commentary. So you had a split advisory board in this location. I don't believe any of them are against the concept of having this type of amenity available. I think the location was specifically the concern, based upon my recollection of reading those.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up, because there's a lot of nuances between people are supportive of a Bike Skills Park. Association put a lot of work into this, and it's probably the only viable property that the city of Aspen owns. Today, in emails, I was emailing John Rigby from SCICO, and it sounds like Buttermilk might be a viable option, but the key word is "might" at this time. So that's like, why I want to bring this up in an action item, talk about the nuance of it, and talk about if there are other viable alternatives, the city's role in doing that.
Thanks. Word comment?
Yeah, I expressed it. I don't think this is, and I do not support keeping this in the budget. Like, once this speaker gets turned on, it's hard to turn it off. And I think, I'm certainly supportive of city funds towards developing, perhaps at Buttermilk or AVSC or some of the other locations. SCICO mentioned when I spoke with them this summer. But I don't want to see this in the budget for this year. It can always come back as a supplemental, but I don't want to see it.
Thank you. So it seems like there's support point one, but not bullet point two here. Bless you.
So at this time, where what I am able to do is amend my recommended budget, move the funding, but it doesn't stop us from, is still exploring administratively, determining if we need additional appropriations for that, we can come to you. I hear you're a friendly type. If we get far enough along, there's a side study with, whether it's ours or someone else's in partnership with them. There's a lot of these partnership studies that we do. You know, Ruining Forks Safe Passages is an example. We come to you and ask you to participate in that. We did that all administratively, including the financial attribution that was within our authorities, the staff level. So we can use the same approach here with this project.
Thank you. And it sounds like a lot of us have had some interaction or reach out to Aspen Skiing Company, and it's been a welcome conversation. So I think that there are some inroads there that we should follow up on.
And then, these are three action items from our first two meetings. Staff will continue to potentially follow up to back to city council.
Thank you. Any items missing there? Thank you.
And with that, tonight's presentations, department presentations will be from APSHA, Arts and Culture Fund for Weare Opera House and Red Brick Arts, Environmental Health and Sustainability, Climate Action, and the RAMP Fund, and Water and Electric Utilities. And then Finance will be presenting the remainder of the Housing Funds, Parking and Transportation, and Stormwater.
With that, Matthew?
Thanks.
So, Councilman, real quick before, Matthew, just a reminder, this is, the 620 Fund is controlled by the Housing Authority. However, you have, through intergovernmental agreements, if you do share a responsibility of general oversight, that's a custom to good at king practices, such as GABBY, and legal requirements. However, the funds that are within 620 Fund are administered by APSHA Board through the APSHA staff.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, Members of Council, Matthew Gilley, of the Aspen, Peking County Housing Authority, good evening. I look forward to talking with you about our 25 budget request. So, you know, that, this is, we support workforce housing based on three simple rules: working full-time in Peking County, living in your unit, and not subletting your unit. And the other thing I just wanted to highlight is, particularly in terms of budget, we're quite lean. We have 11 employees full-time working, when you remove the maintenance and property management people. So for you, for your, for this particular conversation, it's 11 men looking after over 3,000 units, both in terms of rental and ownership. And so when I say we're lean, that's going to lead into one of my supplemental requests this evening. So, the subsidy, I just wanted to highlight on the subsidy, the fact that it goes down next year. That is because one of the supplemental items, the capital repairs, essential repairs pilot program, we haven't put it out for future years. We've put it in this year's budget, but we will come back to you if we want to extend that. I'd imagine we would, but we want to make sure we are good stewards of the taxpayers' money, so we didn't feel like we were in a position to say, this is an ongoing, this is something that the city and Peking County wants to do forever. So we've put it in the budget for this year, but then you'll notice the budget goes down next year's, and carrying on. And that also includes the fact that we are only asking for a website scrape and replace one time. So that also isn't in there for future years. That's why it's going down.
I think it's the first time I've heard "scrape and replace" for a website.
I've been trying to use some housing language and other places. So, yeah, I've been saying scrape and replace the website.
Do you want me to speak to it?
Yeah. So the expenditures, we call it targeted reserve, which is set by statute, that has to be in there. And then we also have, we get money from, excuse me, the sales and rental units in there as well. And you'll note the change in the fund balance there as well. Any questions in particular on that?
Yep. Just going back to the revenue, sorry, Matthew, the management fees, a little over half million dollars in management fees, that's from the smuggler ACI, the units at APSHA.
Correct.
I believe that's an 8% management fee on rents, is how it's said?
12%.
12%, sorry. 12% management fee on rents that is paid to APSHA to serve as property manager.
And, excuse me, do repairs come in under the management fees, the property management fees? What do the units get for that 12%?
For people, but beyond normal maintenance, it would be a capital assessment. I mean, into you with part of this budget process. So the day-to-day maintenance is part of that.
So actually, the maintenance is in the maintenance facility line for revenue coming to those. The management fee covers things that are the administrative side of APSHA that are kind of the backbone, including collecting rents and things of that nature, all the compliance requirements, things of, you know, and some of our tax credit properties, stuff like that.
Capital costs are from the individual funds. So as when we get into the unit funds tonight, just for ACI, for, it will reflect the capital cost within that particular fund.
And 12% seem to be on the low side for, that seems real reasonable.
Yeah, we benchmarked this a number of years ago, and I think we were seeing higher than 12%. I think there was 15, 18% sometimes, but the council at the time decided that 12% was appropriate.
Thank you.
So this, as I mentioned, this is the, with the request, so last cycle, we came to the city and the county for supplemental. So this time, we're asking for it as part of the normal budget process. We believe it's been a highly successful program, which has great capacity to be scaled up or taken in different ways. All the money, so it was $200,000 from each entity. I just have some statistics on this from Liz's work. So we had 91 applications, of which 51 were approved. The average grant was little, it was $7,800, which was a significant contribution to the average repair cost, which was over $15,000. So we believe it was extremely beneficial to those lower-income APSHA owners who we were helping. And we look forward to taking this in different directions, analyzing where we could do better, seeing if we want to look at particular areas to improve, rather than just having the owners come to us. You know, one option is us to be more proactive and reaching out on particular areas of repair. You know, for example, windows, windows were a very popular repair. So, you know, maybe we should go, reach out to windows. So I think this year, we'll probably do it the same way, but we're hoping to gather more data and see how we, in the future years, if council and Peking County would like to continue this program, how we can get the most bang for the buck with taxpayer money.
I'd just like to remind the public that sustainability of our housing assets is really important, and this goes directly towards making those units more livable and extend lifetime of those units. So this is really a good program.
I'm pretty, I want to educate the public on this. Window repairs are one of the biggest asks, and there are grants available through CORE as well to help offset some of those costs. Is that true, or is that part of this?
On windows for CORE, I don't want to speak on half of CORE, but we, when we've been doing these grants, we have been working closely with CORE to maximize energy efficiency.
Great, I want to.
I feel that there's, if there's anything that's rebate, is not capital offset.
Windows were 44% of the repairs, roofs were another big one, plumbing and hot water here was 8%.
And I actually was going to chime in and just encourage you to mend the game, because I believe CORE actually is not specifically funding window replacement anymore.
Yeah, it was very interesting to see what came up, and windows was very big. Any other questions on that?
Not yet.
And as part of all APSHA, both in terms of the APSHA Board, and I think the city and the county, we are very much focused on the overall sustainability of the program. We're looking for innovative ways to get the most out of this money and work towards the overall efficiency and achieving sustainability for the program. So as part of that, that is the request here for a full-time housing policy analyst. Right now, Liz is working about 60% of her time, and she is the city of Aspen Housing Policy Analyst. She's working about 60% of her time on APSHA projects, so we'd like to request a full-time position to work specifically for APSHA, focused on APSHA Board priorities somewhat separately, but, you know, overlapping, working with the city of Aspen Housing Policy Analyst. You know, for example, just last week, Diane and I were discussing the property inspections which APSHA Now is pays for. And we're like, oh, we should be tracking those trends, seeing what we're, what is coming up through the property inspections and developing a database that's good information that we should be looking at. We have a lot of other very interesting projects which we will be working with this person. And we think it's extremely useful and will be very important to develop and respond to the needs of the APSHA Board.
Is some of the work that we've been talking about at this table around income caps and category rents and stuff like that, is that something under this position, or is some of that work already engaged with an outside consulting firm?
So, that's through, that's the contract that you approved for EPS. Liz is leading that, and that is a city-initiated project. 50 to 75% of the funding is coming from the city. APSHA has committed, the APSHA Board committed $25,000 to the project.
And that covers part of it. That's a rental rate study focus in that work. You've asked about was really the AMI range conversation. And, but that, I think there's some differing opinions. So, for example, the reason I want the rental rate studies, I believe we're charging below HUD from of our rental rates, and we need to be very cognizant of that in council's policy decisions and setting rates on property it owns. The bigger question that you brought back multiple times, Mayor, out, if those, you know, example, a category two should be higher, a higher amount, both in absolute dollars and in AMI percentages, is always a discussion for the APSHA Board that they would evaluate in their strategic plan. So, that's really to you to advocate to those APSHA Board members to consider that. The reason why this position is important is that City of Aspen has more regulatory compliance with the state now, compliments of some of the new housing bills. And so, we have things like mandatory health needs assessments that we have to do very, very formalic away in order to comply with state statute. We're going to need some of the city's housing policy analysts' time back to manage some of that work as we move forward.
I'll chime in on that. A pretty robust discussion on the AMI rental program with the APSHA Board. And the APSHA Board decided to pursue that more in the for-sale units than in the rental front. But this, this RFP that was submitted will give us some data points for the rental program.
So, are there ongoing conversations at APSHA regarding the income cap system that we have that people can find themselves qualifying out of their housing? Is that, is that conversation going on at all?
So, the, the APSHA Board is affordability discussion. And, and there was, well, Sarah's right, the primary purpose of that rental rate study is focused on rental rates. However, we were able to afford, figure out how to affordably expand it to include data that will bring back to the APSHA Board, have those kind of discussions. And so, earlier this year, the APSHA Board identified a host of topics that they wanted to discuss around AI, affordability, et cetera. And some of those conversations are going to be held until that study is, comes back data. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is all the overall City of Aspen attack on alligatoring and other asphalt. So, this is the asphalt overlay for all the City of Aspen-owned properties. You have any questions in particular about this? So, we're looping up with the City of Aspen and trying to do this for cost efficiencies overall.
Is this teaming up with the Streets Department? And has, has RFP been issued, and are there, are these hard costs or just pie in the sky?
That's our estimate, yeah.
These are all unit costs. Engineering, I was just looking to see if engineering is issuing an RFP. Once we have a general signal here, we'll issue RFP sometime this quarter in order to secure pricing for next summer. So, there's certainly variables right now. But we want to lock in the contractor as soon as we can because the size of this paving contract is been intentionally made large to be attractive for competition. Will it turn out that way?
And the, the site, I don't know if you've been on the APSHA website recently, but it's, it's not a particularly pleasant experience. So, we're looking to update the look and feel, meet the current accessibility standards, and enhance mobile device compatibility. People go to the APSHA website a lot. And so, we're looking forward to making that a much better experience for them.
Is this the kind of work that you can get done by folks that are in our community, or is this an expertise level?
I think we'd have to go through the, the normal procurement process. We would have.
So, it's possible?
Yeah.
Before, before we get into the individual projects, I wanted to ask a question, you know. Oftentimes, I hear comments about city staff, or APSHA staff. And of course, we only hear complaints, but that we in the past had asked for coaching and for customer relations. And, and could you give us an update on where we are on that?
Yeah, we've been working since the beginning of year with Scott Bowman, who does a lot of work with the City of Aspen. And we've still sessions with him on difficult clients, working on different approaches to deflect anger, to direct it in a positive way. And also doing more long-term work on mapping out business processes to do internally as well, to have us process inside APSHA as well.
Great. I appreciate it. And I know that complaints oftentimes, they don't see as actions been going on. The response to these complaints has been going on now for several months.
It's been going on since the beginning of the year. I'm, I'm actually trying to get Scott at the next, at a APSHA Board meeting soon. I don't know if we could squeeze that in before the end of the year or not, but that's on the agenda. So, he can tell the APSHA Board, you know, how things going and what, and what things he's seen.
Great, thank you.
Additionally, I voluntarily participated in the City of APSHA, the AS customer service framework program that was in response to council's goals. So, I've been a very active participant in that process as well. I hear great things too about that staff. I just want to know, I'm sorry, you're only hearing the other side. But I, there's some great things happening over there.
I think people would rather complain.
Any questions about the website? So, Smuggler Mountain is one of our, it's 11 long-term rental units, and priority is given to full-time consecutive employment in Pickin County. And it's one of our lower income, a family of four there can only earn less than $55,250. So, it's really pitched to the lower income. It's one of our few lower-income properties. And net assets not to exceed $151,000. And this is actually owned by APSHA, not by the city or the Pickin County. Anything in particular? And so, this is general upkeep. Asphalt's in there and just general maintenance. Nothing too exciting in there.
Question?
Yeah, when I spoke with you, Matthew, about.
About before the meeting, and it's a curious, the general condition of these Smuggler Mountain apartments, how long they're going to last? We're putting $50,000 into paint and wood refinishing. And I'm, I'm just curious, should we be putting that money towards fire, new siding, fire-resistant siding to mitigate fire problems or fire, wildfire suppression? I don't know what kind of siding on here now, but just curious about that. Is a long-term pull improvement on this project?
I think the building's actually cinder block.
What's it, $40,000 for painting?
Exterior, yeah.
The, the cinder blocks?
Yeah.
Never mind.
There's some trim work around some of the balcony's too. I think that that's not cinder block. It might be wood that needs a little upkeep, so.
So, this is the overall request. So, a full-time housing policy analyst, essential repairs program, and the, the website, and then the capital assessment. And for Trust Scott, just want to highlight that we, we do plan, part of that is replacing the playground at Trust Scott, which we're excited about because there's a lot of kids there, and there's a fairly small unit. So, we're looking forward to giving them a better experience.
Couple of questions. APSHA is the property management for a handful of properties?
They're for Trust Scott One, Two, ACI, Ralt, Smug. Recently, I have a few communications with some folks at some other affordable housing unit projects. And they were wondering about APSHA's availability for being property management. Is that something that other properties can avail themselves to, or is that not available?
It's probably a policy decision of the APSHA Board to see if they would like to extend their services into that area. And we're expected to do a cost recovery and profit assessment of that. I would say that I hesitate putting the, more and more in this role when there are a lot of qualified private sector property management companies out there. It would just be the one other thing I would, I would, my initial reaction is as a private sector, perhaps there are individual contractors they've been unhappy with, or individual property management company, but there are other property management companies.
Well, just to my APSHA rep, alternate, I would just say, you know, I'd love for you to think about it, maybe talk to your board members about it. I agree with Sarah. It's not something necessarily that I'd love to jump into, but maybe some exploration about it would be, would be warranted. The, the, to follow on her comments, the issue that I've heard back is that there aren't that many choices that are affordable here in Aspen. So, I, I, I don't know. I just bring it up because of recent news and because of the contacts that I've had with folks that are looking for.
Are you looking, your comments directed toward you or for rentals or ownership units or both?
Both, mostly, but both.
I wonder, I wonder if it's possible to have some kind of a rating system for different companies if we want to even get into that. But we can certainly bring that up to the board.
And I just wanted to put out there that the 12% management fee that the City of Aspen pays on its properties, that I want, want that to be considered a base because there is additional subsidy from the City of Aspen, much more than that 12% on those properties. And to the APSHA staff, don't want that to be missed or we're having any HOAs to think that it's only a 12% cost.
Just add, as you, as you probably know, APSHA hadn't in the business at all of HOA management.
Yes, it's like the, the scope and the mission, it doesn't really include it. I, to me, it's, it's similar and akin to kind of Rafta. And Rafta's had to really, well, number one, they've had to really venture into the housing game. But number two, first and last mile solutions and stuff, right? So, just, I don't know if it's a direction that we want to go. And I also don't know if it's a direction that we need to go. But I'll just, again, give it to my APSHA rep and say, hey, you might want to think about it. I know that there's a need out there for some property management. Any additions on APSHA budget summary? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matthew.
Up next, we have Arts and Culture. All right, I'll do a brief overview of the 120 Fund in total. Revenues for the fund are primarily part of the Arts and Culture RET, almost over 70% along with investment income due to their large fund balance and events and rental revenues at Wheeler and Red Brick Center for the Arts. Just as a reminder, the expanded use of Arts and Culture Funds was approved by voters in fall of 2021. On the expense side, do I have an expense slide, sir? Expenses will be highlighted in more detail by Sarah and Mike as they go through Wheeler and Red Brick. I will note at the very bottom in green, we are tracking the spend-down of the historical fund balance prior to the full expanded use capacity. Any questions on the 120 Fund as a whole?
I actually just want to take a moment because, Mike, I don't know that you have met all of these folks at the table. The fifth one you haven't met, he's not here tonight. Could you just take a quick minute to introduce yourself?
Sure, that was part of my presentation. I'm like Director of the Wheeler Opera House. Today, my stage number 31 in Ralt, so I'm very excited to be here, appreciate the opportunity, and look forward to talking about that. And getting to know all of you and, you know, outside of this room.
Oh, you didn't have to add that. We're well aware. You asked if there's any general questions. You know, I do still have that one general, and we made the change on this fund and kind of opening the uses, how this tracks. I know that there's members of our community that have concern about what's written here as the historical Wheeler dedicated balance versus utilizing it under the new name of the Arts and Culture Fund and, and how those balances are shifting and changing over. There's a, there was a big concern about the Wheeler not having its safety net, if you will, and perhaps not having the budgeting for capital needs going on in the future. So, at some point, I would love to just hear that for myself and for the public about what this means and what it means to the Wheeler. I was considerate of making a suggestion for our budgetings that we would maybe do a little bit of a Wheeler reserve, perhaps, in our fund policy, but I'm not sure if others feel that way or if we really feel that's necessary. But I would love to address just how we are, how the Wheeler feels secure and comfortable in this new outlay of, of the fund balance. We've had this conversation three or four times before.
Yes, so we are happy to take the direction of the council. From, obviously, we feel it's covered under either option, the, the strict dedication on one side or the expanded use on the other because it can fully buy the Wheeler regardless. The city also has, obviously, a very robust risk policies in place in case there's any sort of, you know, significant damage to the Wheeler. We have that kind of protection in place, so we don't have to rely solely on fund balance even in those situations. So, but it is up to council and their purview as to how you want to align that reserve as it goes forward.
Yeah, I know when we were having discussions about putting, there were some pretty robust discussions about the spin-down, how much, how fast we should spin this down. The, I think at the time, we were, we were thinking there was about a $40 million balance in the Wheeler fund before the Wheeler RET vote. And now I see it, 2029, we're, we're beyond 100% reserves after 2029, it looks like. And that's, I think, our normal target reserves, 20% and we're 100% on the Wheeler.
So, the requirement is 100% of operating expenses in any given year on a policy the council landed on. The fact that we have $49 million in combined fund balance in 29 is the aspect that we just don't need the same amount of money as is coming in the door in any projected year. So, it just continues to either maintain or build that fund balance.
So, 100% reserve is between 9.1 and 11 going up to 2029?
Correct. So, every year, we're basically 4X that number at this point.
Do you have anything on that?
Thank you.
Go ahead and just go to the next one. Great. So, hi, everybody. Again, I'm Mike, the new executive director of Wheeler Opera House. As I said, be here and appreciate the opportunity to build on the Wheeler's incredible history of serving the city, its residents, and our guests here around. As you probably know, the Wheeler Opera House is the City of Aspen's premier venue for gathering the community for shared experiences. Those experiences span a range of formats and disciplines, including music, comedy, lectures, theater, film, dance, panel discussions, arts education events, and so much in between. As I said, I've just completed my first 30 days, so I'm working with my colleagues to formulate the vision more fully for the Wheeler. But big picture right now, my hope is for the Wheeler Opera House to become the Radio City Music Hall of the Rockies. In other words, a beautiful historic venue that is rooted locally but recognized globally. So, these next two budget slides give a good overview of the different ways in which we activate the building. Nearly half of the revenue is generated through a curated, multidisciplinary presenting program with a commitment to affordability and access for the residents of Aspen. The remainder balance is generated through the ways we partner with cultural organizations and members of the community by offering space for rental events, by providing box office services through Aspen Showtix, and by serving as a landlord for two tenants, which are currently the Aspen Public House and Aspen Collective. Any question? Yep. And then, you know, the expenditures reflect that same breadth of activity in a, in a, in a comparable ratio to the revenues. So, we have two supplemental requests this year. One is for a full-time audio engineer that would really bring our venue up to industry standard. For a venue of this caliber, it's normal for a production, full-time production team to be a team of four, should be a production manager, full-time audio engineer, full-time lighting electrician, and a full-time carpenter or, or stagehand. This particular position will also improve our consistent delivery of top-tier sound quality for concerts and events that come in, enhancing the overall experience for the entire community. We're finding that as more and more venues open throughout the valley, the competition for over-hire or part-time skilled audio technicians, that competition is increasing. So, the ability to. that competition is increasing. So the ability to lock someone up that has the experience and expertise that we need is, is very attractive and important. And as we continue to upgrade the equipment in the building, our approach of hiring part-time personnel puts the, you know, the, the, the quality and accountability related to that equipment puts it at risk. So this would help alleviate that risk.
Question there?
What's the delta between an FTE?
Thank you.
The delta between an FTE versus the current approach of rotating part-time. You're looking at 112,500 dollars EE, but currently you're doing it through rotating part-time. So I'm wondering what the difference is to our budget for going to a full-time versus the rotating part-time.
So what you see up there is a request of delta. Those dollars are still going to exist. A full-time audio engineer does not mean that all, everything will be covered. Really, we still need part-time supplemental due to leave, show schedules, things of that nature. And so that's why our request is for the full 112,500 because we believe that's what's necessary to move forward. So it's not like some of the others, like when we construction mitigation officers where we're like, the delta's really only about 30,000. In this one, true cost of what we're asking for is the 112.5 to meet the programmatic needs of the facility.
Our other request is for a full-time marketing coordinator, our marketing director. This would be a second full-time position to bring all of our marketing strategy in-house. Now, certain, certain needs, certain services would still be outsourced, including graphic design and page digital advertising. The current structure, like I said, includes a staff director and we work with currently an out-of-state based marketing and PR firm, which we are reviewing that to see if we might be able to bring that not only in-house with this position, but also maybe into the community. And the real, the biggest reason for this position is to be able to increase the efficiency and, and work more closely and more effectively with our community partners. To be agile, marketing these days is very much in real time. You have to respond in the moment. And with the amount of activity that we're looking at in 2025, it's too much for one person. And so they need support.
Mike, my questions on the last couple of items are how much of these are from your experience in New York versus what has been the practice in Aspen prior to you arriving? I know you've only been here 31 days, but, and, and we did receive support for this budget from the Wheeler Board. But how much of these changes are from your past experience in moving us into a different realm?
Uh, transparently, this budget that I'm defending was my rival and as was, were these positions. However, I fully support them based on my experience in other, in other positions.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I believe the marketing coordinator was a position, and this was the arrangement at the Wheeler historically for a long time. And then we outsourced a little bit and started working a little differently. So this is a kind of a return to it. I have a little bit of experience in the, in this field and, and I think these are, well, I, both of them, but the marketing coordinator as well, I, I think is a, is a great move for the Wheeler. Comment, John?
Yeah, I also agree. I don't know. I'm, I have reservations about two new employees, but I also feel that if the Wheeler Board supports this, then I'm behind it too.
Great. Let's go on. So we have one large capital project request for 2025. This is to really complete the upgrade of the overall audio system in the facility. We are currently in the process of finalizing the upgrade of the audience-facing components. This is for the onstage artist-facing components, commonly referred to as monitors. This upgrade would ensure the compatibility with the, the audience-facing upgrade that we're currently finishing. It also just brings us up to standards and maintains us as a best-in-class venue. And then these are just the, the standard capital requests to help maintain the buildings throughout the year.
Exterior lighting enhancements. Are we doing any artistic treatment? I know that there's been a lot of conversation for a little while at the board level and just wondering if we're going to do any exterior accent lighting at this time or not.
Well, we've started, I don't know if you've had the meeting while I was gone. We're trying to start a conversation with the new historic preservation officer around this. Very tight. I think that we have some work to do before we can guarantee that this is a go, including perhaps needing to visit the historic preservation commission before I can answer that for you.
Done. And I hope we'll also be looking at dark sky regulations while we're looking at exterior lighting.
Certainly, we anticipate complying with the council's updated lighting guidelines. I'm sorry, lighting regulations in that. But we do think there is a bit of flexibility for downlighting, given the architectural significance of the building in the community.
Thank you. Any questions on these items?
It is. Great. Any questions?
Welcome to Fall in Aspen, Mike.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, just a, a moment for a comment. If you haven't been over to the Wheeler during its closure, while they are doing a massive amount of work to the stage, some of the requests that you see here for some of the technical upgrades, I actually do put the Wheeler Opera House back as an absolute premier venue, along with what Mike's saying about what his goals for the venue are. It can only get there if the facility can stain it. And the improvements that we're making right now are definitely along the path towards making this an absolute jewel of the Rockies once again. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Sarah Roy, executive director of the Red Brick Center for the Arts, and I'm pleased to be here on upcoming budget. So this is your full-time staff at the Red Brick. I can sit down, Allison Viola, Anna Space and, and myself. But we are supported, you can flip to the next slide, by Biz Services, which a few of the members are presented here, who help us with our facility maintenance needs, capital project management, and additional admin support. We also work with over 20 art educators that teach both our youth and adult art classes. And you see Chad and Chris leading the teen mural camp this summer. And we have a gallery committee that advises us on our exhibition programming. And Trace Nichols pictured here is speaking to guests at one of our gallery openings, and she serves on that committee. Actually, before we go on, sorry, that's okay. I have a few slides I want to kind of share with you guys from this year. This year marks the 30th anniversary of the city purchasing the Red Brick and turning it into a community arts center. So I just wanted to celebrate that, take a little moment to recognize that. With business service, we're wrapping up a pretty extensive renovation project. So if you haven't been by the Red Brick, please do so. I'd be happy to take you on a tour and show you what we did. We had a fantastic summer lineup of youth art camps, adult art classes, and several large community events. And we also hosted a pilot, pilot public art project, which we'll talk a little bit more about later in the presentation. Okay. Here is our revenue. We have two revenue sources. One that comes in from our programming, which is our art classes and gallery sales. And then our second revenue store, source comes in from our facility. So renting the eight nonprofits that have office space in the Red Brick, we have 10 artist studio space. And then we also have a dance studio and conference room that brings in revenue. We rent those spaces out to the, to the larger community. From our expenditures, they're organized into three areas. We have our administrative costs, which also include our programmatic cost, the expenses related to operating and maintaining the facility, and then you'll see a third line item for the new proposed public art program, which again, we'll get into a little bit more detailed discussion in the supplemental request. We are proposing a 3% increase to our fees. We have our programmatic fees and our facility fees, excuse me, to keep up with operational cost. I do want to point out that we have a slightly higher increase to our youth summer camp, and that is to keep it in line with other similar camps in the area. And I just want to point out, we have a scholarship program to always ensure that cost is never a barrier for any kiddo to participate. And we work closely with the Buddy Program and Aspen Family Connection to ensure that we're getting those scholarships out into our community. We are requesting ongoing funding to launch an Aspen public art program. So the core intention of this program is to build and strengthen community and to use art to do this. Creating human connection and community building is woven throughout this program. It's written into the mission and it's the driving force behind the types of projects that we want to see. The two pilot projects that we did, the street mural last summer, as well as the pilot project that we did this summer, which featured works by Anna Marie Hernando, I think really demonstrate how public art can be used to build community. This summer's pilot project had three primary goals. The first was to test run the internal review and approval process. And we also worked with a selection committee that was made up of volunteer community members that helped us with the selection of that, of that artist and that work. We also collaborate with community partners. So that's a core part of this program. And so it's something we wanted to kind of test run. And so for the, the product project this summer, we partnered with the transportation department, the parks department, and the Roaring Fork Transportation Authority, otherwise known as Rafta. And lastly, the third goal was to create programming. So again, that's another key tenet of this new program is to create additional opportunities for deeper engagement, for education, for learning, and for dialogue. For the, for the project this summer, we hosted a bus rider appreciation event with this, with the transportation department and Buckhorn Public Art. I want to recognize Tim Sac, he's here in the audience, who all participated on that event. We had music and food, and we engaged with over 300 people that day. And Anna Marie Hernando, the artist, was also present. She gave an artist talk that was really well-attended. And then I gave a handful of kind of pop-up, pop-up presentations throughout the community about that event, I mean, excuse me, about, about her work. We learned and really validated kind of two important aspects. First, the process and resources it, it takes to undertake a project. We really learned that and it has helped inform the budget you see proposed. We also demonstrated how public art can enhance our public spaces, bring people together, and really offer those meaningful experiences. I got to take a, a tea break real quick. So here's our request for ongoing funding to develop the, to develop the programming. You will see we have two projects already prioritized for next year, the continuation of our city hall exhibition. I want to point out that the money allocated towards that exhibition, the vast majority of it goes towards paying our local and regional artists who participate in the exhibition. They actually receive a loan stipend for having their work here on display. We've also prioritized the street mural for next year. And then additionally, we have money allocated towards programming and our communication and documentation needs. If you want to, you can go onto the next slide. And the next slide presents kind of a full picture of the request. We also have one-time cost, one-time, excuse me, supplemental we're asking for, for kind of the startup cost that we see to getting the program going, and then a full-time, a full-time position. This person would oversee, again, the, the development and the approval process and the programming for the public art program. Any questions?
Sam?
Pete, I think that's for you. What fund pays for the Red Brick? Is this from like arts and culture RET funding?
Correct.
It is. Okay. That's great. And Sarah, with that, are you getting everything you need? Culture RET fund has plenty of money.
You know, this is a great starting point for us. I think this is, yeah, we're, we're going to get in it and we're going to see how the community responds, what their enthusiasm is for it. This is definitely not purchasing any permanent pieces of art. This is temporary that we're talking about, but we definitely thought out of the gate, let's start with temporary. Let's test it out, see how, again, the community is responding. But if we ever wanted a permanent piece, it would definitely be a bigger ask to come back for.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Just a question, Mike. Third, and just...
It's one of those days.
Yeah, one of those days. The art, $45,000 for a city hall, these aren't purchases. What does that cover?
So the artists each receive a $2,000 loan stipend to participate, teen artists in this last exhibition. And then we also have installation cost. So we have professional installers that come and install it. We also have a shipping line item and framing line item. So if any of the work has to get shipped here and needs to get framed, we then have the budget to, to offer those resources.
And are those art exhibits, those are for sale through the artist?
They are for sale through the artist. So if you notice, there's a link to each piece and we put a QR code that directs anybody interested to kind of directly to the artist. Well, I figured a savvy buyer would know to kind of go directly to the artist. But if they, if anybody ever reaches out, then I always just, yeah, direct them to the artist to purchase it. And I have heard that these have been purchased after they've been on exit here, which is really exciting to hear. The artist was very grateful for that.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yep.
There's no cost recovery there for, if we, we frame an artist's piece and then the artist sells it and we don't get paid back for that either?
We have not recouped.
And that's been intentional. When we discussed the creation program as a pilot four years, five years ago now, was the intention was elevate Colorado artists by giving them the opportunity to add Aspen to their portfolio where they've had expositions. And we understand that there's just some costs that could make our venue inaccessible, such as professional framing. And it felt like that was a fair trade exchange for the loan artwork of 24 months. We get people through city hall to look at artwork. So we, we find it as a very valuable tool for inviting the community and our guests to city hall to experience it.
We've seen an increase in our installation services and therefore requesting kind of additional funding to cover these costs. And this would be for Red Brick Center for the Arts. Any questions on that one? If not, we'll move on to our capital request. It's our capital projects and maintenance request for the coming year.
Any question on capital items? Any other comments?
Yeah, can we go back one slide? Thanks. Well, I was noticing in an earlier slide that, that it's costing us $400,000 a year to, just to maintain the Red Brick. And so this is in addition to that?
That is like, that's like paying gas, utilities, water. We pay full-time position, who's a member of the business service team. So that's not kind of maintenance. That's just literally just the cost of...
Doing business.
Doing business and having a facility with heat and...
Thanks, Zach.
Yes, yeah.
I did want to refer to this capital project for $55,000 includes how the Red Brick Art Center came to be. And it's the previous type of the building, which is something that you asked us to consider about two years ago, about how would we incorporate that in. And now that the lobby work is moving along fabulously, this is one of the next steps of that direction you gave us. Thank you.
It'd be great if it had some recognition for those who are involved in getting the arts, the Red Brick to be great. Where did you have another comment here?
It just seems to earn $10,000 roughly is an ongoing cost of the public art program.
That's right.
Good.
With that being stated, you know, I think the need for partnership here, I think that there would be some opportunity for cost recovery in some of the things that you're doing there. I've had a lot of conversations with you as well as with Sarah because this is something that got kickstarted with the previous council. And I feel like there's a tremendous amount of opportunity here. These, the numbers that you share back to us are a little bit staggering for me. I think my original view of, of getting this program going was, for example, number one, just to start with a map of the existing public art that's already out there. So, you know, I think that there's low-hanging fruit that we're, we could still take advantage of. I'm supportive of your budget request. For now, this is still a new program, so I have a lot of hope for the future. And I, you know, I think that it really should put a, a new spin on Aspen, which is art and culture for everyone. It has all of our community and our citizenry involved in art, at least up to the degree that it can add to their lives. And so for me, when, when Ward says like, oh, this is a, a chunk of money on an annual basis, I agree, it is a chunk of money. I think that it really needs to be looked after carefully. You said that you have a committee stood up, but I don't even, I didn't...
We don't have a committee stood up. We just stood up a selection committee for a pilot project, but that, that committee is not the ongoing committee. So we will be some kind of advisory or standing up a section D to, to review and approve projects moving forward. That's definitely an important part of the program, that we have the community voice participating in it.
That sounds great. I think that'd also help a lot refine some of the, the uses that the community wants to see there. So, and then once again, I'll just say that I think there's opportunity for local partnerships and through this funding. We have tremendously talented citizenry and I'd love to see us putting these dollars back into the community as much as possible and not outside the community.
And yep, the intention is definitely to utilize the money, it's Aspen and, you know, the ship is definitely a core tenet of it. And so I'm hoping with our resources and their resources, we can be able to, yeah, do more.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, good evening. I'm CJ Haller with Director of Environmental Sustainability, City of Aspen. It's a pleasure to be here with you all right discussing both the environmental health and sustainability budget as well as the R E M P budget follow. Starting off with environmental sustainability, I'd like to draw your attention to a few of the priorities that we're really going to be working on in 2025, which include the built environment, moving forward with building IQ, working on a facilities decarbonization roadmap, as well as diving in deeper on water efficiency program on the environmental health, public health side. We're working on providing greater access to the services that we provide, such as restaurant inspections, childcare inspections. And so we're working to do those in Spanish, as well as providing trainings in Spanish to kind of better suit the needs of our regulated community. We're also working to streamline processes, better alignment with building, planning and zoning processes and community development to make the process of applying for a restaurant revision or a new restaurant build out to be as simple and streamlined as possible for our customers. Transportation, we're working on bolstering our capabilities around EVs, both in terms of public facing charging stations and electrifying our own internal equipment fleet. And then on the waste side, we're looking forward to rolling into a next successful year with our organics program, which has seen a huge uptick in the amount of organic waste, which has been diverted from Picking County landfill. We're up 54% year to date over where we were in 2023 with the implementation of the organics, which we passed last year. And we will also be bringing to you construction and demolition policy options in the coming month. So looking forward to starting off that process for 2025 as well. A quick overview of the revenues for our team in environmental health and sustainability. We have two revenue sources on the environmental health side. One for consumer protection, which is a $20,000 contract with the state of Colorado to provide restaurant and childcare inspection services. And then we also get to keep a considerable portion of the restaurant licensing fees each year. And then we have our single-use bag fee, which is provided by the purchase of single-use bags in Aspen retailers. On the climate side, revenues are collected from the R E M P fund, water and electric rate payers. On the expenditure side, on E H, our program costs are pretty evenly split out with the exception of the special wastes and recycling program, which the larger dollars there reflect the management of the Rio Grande Recycling Center, as well as the provision of containers to support policies such as the compost diversion ordinance, which was passed last year. So there's a significant cost that we are helping businesses overcome by providing them with wildlife-proof containers to compost out in alleys, so that there is a minimized amount of bear intrusions related to the collection of compost. And then, of course, the costs at the recycling center are significant for hauling of materials. Everything else is kind of an even split. Yes, Ward?
Isn't there a state law about single-use bags? And we get some fees, just doing the math here, for our revenue for a single-use bag is roughly $44,000, $45,000. And the expenses are 122, so it looks like it's costing the city $77,310 for the single-use bag program. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is. And not necessarily the administration of that program, we're using those dollars to do so. We'll take funds and we'll do electronic waste recycling days. So there are things outside just the provision of the bags to do. There's a $45,000, there are additional things that we do outside of just reusable bags that are kind of part of that general waste and recycling program. Does that answer your question?
I was curious for the state, the new state law office here, that we're given some revenue streams given to the cities to help administer the single-use bag?
I'm not familiar with it. It does expand out into some additional retail. So there's a minimal uptake, but the difference between what we're collecting from grocers or collecting under the expanded state reg is pretty minimal change. Just because of the amount of folks here that did qualify for the regulation because of the size of their business and being local businesses, it's a fairly minimal impact in the community right now.
See, I'd be interested in seeing that breakdown of that 120K for expenses. What other services are delivered to the community under that?
And just for clarity purposes, historically, the reason why we've budgeted this directly as a revenue and expenditure is because of the fee nexus requirement. After we got through the Supreme Court ruling in favor of the City of Aspen, as well, we thought it was very important to keep that clear. And we have consistently always outspent the revenues in what the single-use program tends to accomplish. So it's been a trend for, I don't know, at least since 2015, of this revenues being less than the expenditures.
Yeah, I just want the community to know what, with these other, you know, 122K, how they benefit from them.
I like to say about this, it's the most efficient delivery of services anywhere in the city. They spend 99% of their dollars doing climate and, or excuse me, climate action and resiliency work and only 1% on administrative services, although they do benefit from the administrative services provided to the environmental health and sustainability team. So a bit of a, maybe a misrepresentation here. But that $885,000 is the combination that you saw of the revenue slide as well. We're collecting fees from water and electric rate utility payers, as well as pulling some money from the R E M P fund to support the climate resiliency work in the city. We do have one supplemental request on the environmental health and sustainability team this year, and that is for an additional year of the termed F T E that council approved for the 2024 budget. This position is kind of a combination of what used to be served by interns. We've taken the $20,000 in the temporary labor budget and asked for an additional $78,500 to support a termed full-time position. This really just allows us to have the ability to deliver on council's protect our environment goal at the speed and scope, which are needed to achieve our carbon reduction goals into the future. And so this, there's a few things listed up here as far as position deliverables. Benchmarking support to building owners, having somebody who is dedicated on the city staff who can dive deep in and do research and analysis. It's been a really critical part of us achieving some exceptionally high-level outcomes on this front. We have benchmarked 36% of all of the real estate in Aspen, commercial and multifamily that we're under on phase three. We have 100% compliance with our benchmarking requirements, which is unheard of in the industry. So having this additional capacity has allowed us to be able to do that as well. We've been able to do a tremendous amount of reporting for the carbon disclosure product, carbon disclosure project and the greenhouse gas inventory, which Aspen takes part in and be able to get really effective information to allow us to make informed decisions on kind of where our liabilities still sitting. What areas are we being really successful in through the city's efforts? And just having kind of this deeper level of research and analysis available to us that frankly just was not available when we were trying to service these needs with interns that were rotating out every few months. This level of commitment to the work has also allowed us, I think, something really cool to celebrate. We were named Community of the Year for our exceptional climate work at Mountain Towns 2030 last year. And I think like, these are the types of things that having this level of staffing provides. Awesome building of institutional knowledge that stays with the organization as we move forward. So if we're helping somebody in phase two of benchmarking, we can help somebody with the same level of service in phase four of benchmarking without having to retrain staff and get them up to speed to help them be effective in the community service element of the building IQ work that we're doing. So that's kind of a breakdown of what we're looking to do. The position is asked for in a termed state again right now. I think it's really important for us with positions like this and doing this kind of work to be able to clearly demonstrate the value of the position. And so I think having it on this termed basis as we're moving through these different phases with building IQ at this point is an effective way to be able to do that and analyze on an annual basis whether or not this is the correct expenditure of dollars. And I feel at this point, for 2025, this will be really a critical component of us being able to accomplish the work that we're looking to do in 2025. Yes, Ward?
What's the cost of a business to do benchmarking, to do building IQ?
To the business or to the program?
At a high level, I thought we had funded Core and contracted with Core to do a fee-for-service rendered and that it did not cost the businesses any money that we were paying for it through our R E M P contribution to Core.
That is correct. Yep.
So there's no cost to a business owner to get this benchmarking?
That is correct.
And could you just, for the community, remind us of what this gives, what this benchmarking does for us in the future?
Yeah, it provides building owners or building managers exceptionally accurate information on both energy and water consumption. It provides them a detailed report out of their individual building's performance needs, places where they're selling, places where they're following. And allow them to make really informed decisions on where they might spend their efforts moving forward to better their building from an energy-water performance perspective. And having that information is kind of the foundational piece of all of our building performance standard that we are looking to move forward. If it's not set from foundation, it really doesn't to our goals in an effective, reliable fashion.
So, not to present the leading question, but we have this benchmarking information for the commercial businesses. Core Works will work with that business to figure out how they can make savings on water and energy?
They are, you're jumping forward into my present, but I'm happy to answer your question now and we can talk on it some more later, but that's exactly. Help them collect the information to do the benchmarking itself and they provide them with a detailed report card. And they also connect that with free screens and, you know, additional ways to help fund the work that needs to be done.
So some of these improvements can be done that are no cost to the business?
Correct.
Benchmarking will quantify what kind of savings they've made through the upgrade, let's say.
That is correct. Yeah, we can actually measure so we know the improvement they're making and also the success rate.
That's the end of my softball questions.
Let's keep it at that level. Don?
Guys, I fully support this. You guys are doing incredible work. I was up in Jackson at the Mountain Towns 2030 Climate Solutions Summit and was very proud of our, of our environment. We are widely recognized as being the lead on many issues and this is one of them. Great work, guys.
Okay. On the capital side, we have $71,000 set aside for 2025 to continue to enhance EV charging infrastructure in the city. The EV master plan that was approved calls for 20, or excuse me, 35 to 45 plugs and we're currently at 23 plugs. And what we really work to do with this program, and we've taken the dollars and kind of spread them out so they're available on a year-to-year basis. They used to be split out so they're available every couple of years. But this, having annual dollars available, really allows us to capitalize on coordinating with public works projects. So we're minimizing having to redo any concrete work, any infrastructure work. We're able to lay conduit, take advantage of curb and gutter cuts and all those sorts of things to really make the installation of these additional charging stations as cost-effective as possible. And so there are a handful that we're looking to be able to pursue in 2025 and the $71,000 helps to cover the cost of being able to put those in in a timely fashion, not have to wait and do things kind of twice.
Of course, I have a question. People that use these EV charging stations, they're paying for the electricity, correct?
Correct.
And they're paying for parking?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so it's not, it's not like they're getting a free ride by using these?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a cost recovery that we look for in this program? I'm sorry, I can't recall it. As we've built this program up over the last 10 years, I forget, what's our philosophy?
There is, yeah. We're looking to do better, so this used to be free and now we've implemented charges on these to kind of reflect what the trends are nationally. Parking actually will be able to better speak to that nexus of cost recovery as they do set the fees for this. But we are working to have a, I think, a net zero on that. Is that accurate?
Level two and level three chargers, we are recovering our costs for operating the facilities. Level one chargers, if I have that right, level three is the highest or lowest?
Three is the fastest.
Oh, so level three is we are not collecting our full costs. That is the biggest hurdle for us. There's a high demand charger because there's so much power that has to be available to draw and it creates a significant bump on the operational cost for that particular side. I do recall that we came in front of council a couple of months back and we proposed some rate changes on the level three charge to bring them closer to getting to full coverage. But we felt like it was too far of a lead to go all the way there, so we're still subsidizing those units specifically. The rest of the cost for installation and purchasing these units, I know CJ's team's done a very good job of getting grants for a lot of those. So that offsets a lot of the capital infrastructure that we're putting in, so.
And are all of the EV charge stations in the city as an operation, are they operational?
All but one. We had the vandalism incident this summer, which actually only rendered three of them. Some of them were a little peculiar looking, but totally functional. We're just waiting on some parts to repair the final one, which I believe is down here in the level three charges in the parking garage.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did we get an indication of what the vandalism was about or who was doing it?
I believe it's still an open case, so I did not comfortable commenting here.
Okay, that's great.
Investigation underway.
That's it? Any additional questions on the environmental health and sustainability budget before we jump into R E M P?
John?
John?
Just seems like a great value thanks again. This is one of the lower-priced items on our menu tonight.
Okay, so now let's talk a little bit about the R E M P budget and the plans are for that 2025. I asked, I believe it was on opening night, to provide a little bit of an update on dollars spent on building IQ to date. And that's this first slide. There's been just north of a million dollars that has gone to Core since 2022, which was the inception of building IQ. In addition to what is essentially a one F T E in our department. It's actually, you know, components of a couple of different folks' job, but it basically pencils out to one F T E plus the dollars that have gone to Core to date. With those dollars, we've been able to benchmark 36% of Aspen's community square footage. As I mentioned earlier, when we were talking about the F T E on our side for environmental health, we've achieved 100% compliance with our benchmarking requirements. And have been able to provide, to Ward's questions, building owners are getting free scorecards, assessments, consulting and connections to grant dollars and rebates to help fund improvements to buildings. Just an example of that, Core's in the first half of 2024 provided $190,000 in grants and rebates to building owners to help fund upgrades that are discovered through the benchmarking process. Next steps, there was also some questions about for building IQ. We are currently in the process of working with our stakeholder group to assess four different policy options for a building performance standard. It is our intent to reconvene that group in November of this year, kind of hash out some policy positions that council will then be able to assess in the early parts of 2025 and see what direction, if any, we'd like to move forward with on the building performance standard. So that's kind of the big next step. And then we'll also be bringing in information in 25 to look at potential avenues to pursue for beneficial electrification for the community as well. Okay. So for the 2025 budget for R E M P, the current proposal is to have $750,000 that go towards foundational services. Those are some of the things that we discussed a little bit in the previous conversation as well, which go towards assessments, rebates and grants. Case study development, which has been really helpful for us to be able to have some effective on-the-ground case studies here to answer a lot of questions about the applicability and the functionality of some of the newer technologies here in our community at elevation, at cold temperatures. And to really kind of be able to look at things such as, what is it going to take? We sort of built this out with building IQ as we looked at building performance standards. Like what does it take to bring a building of a certain age, of a certain performance level, up to where a building performance standard might be? And to give folks who are building owners and building managers like a good monetary assessment of some of the costs that they may be looking at prior to bringing to council something like a building performance standard. So we're really working with a highly informed group there when we're looking at our stakeholders. This also helps Core to provide a building performance hub, which is awesome, high-level wraparound services for folks who are in the benchmarking or building performance standard process. Again, that connection of staff to really help kind of walk them through the process and make sure that they have access to the resources that they need to make the improvements that they desire. Yep. The R E M P fund financials. On here, you'll see a few different things reflected, the $180,000 on the transfer out is what's reflected for the climate team. You'll see that there is a significantly larger transfer out in 2026 and that's a million dollars. You'll see that there is a significantly larger transfer out in 2026 and that's a million dollars to go towards energy efficiency projects at the lumberyard. Think, I don't know, Pete, do you want to talk any about the, the revenue component of that?
Yeah, I guess the biggest takeaway on the revenue component here is that we're actually over-collecting from this target in this year substantially. So I think fees have been modified to incorporate some additional energy consumption items on properties. That happened middle of this year, early part of this year. And so that started to increase our revenues actually a bit more than anticipated. So we are well past any $100,000 kind of benchmark that we've been kind of putting in as a placeholder. We do keep it a little soft in the out-years because we don't want to ever have a situation where we're overcommitting future operational costs. So we kind of keep the planning light on the out-years.
Yeah. The only thing I would add to that is that it is true of any projects that are subject to the most recent building code adoption, where we did significantly increase the types of outdoor amenities that are captured in and collections in the process.
We're getting, we're getting increased funding for this by selling greenhouse gas, basically. It's for sale. And I'm wondering if we need to have stricter codes so that, kind of following what the county has done is that their rent fees have decreased because their building codes have required more mitigation or don't allow as many, as many uses of energy. Just from a high level, it's like CO2s for a sale, you have to plunk down some money for some rent fees.
I don't want to make any blanket statements about the county, but I will say that a lot of county projects have more space available for PV systems on site as we're seeing more regularly than we do in the city. And the other thing I would say is that the county has followed our building code adoption with also putting in place an outdoor energy of 200 million BTUs for new projects. And, you know, the addition of elements within the program that we're capturing in building permits. You've had comments around heat, replacement of metal systems and those kinds of things. Certainly feel like we're being fairly aggressive on those things, certainly continuing to serve as a leader for other mountain communities on these topics. But I think it continues to be a topic that I think both the county and city are evaluating of the demands for particularly outdoor amenities that require significant energy. We have included in the RIMP fund an additional $420,000 supplemental request. This is going directly to provide bespoke services for folks who are coming onboard with the benchmarking process in the coming year. There will be 68 new buildings that will be coming onboard with benchmarking in 2025. And it's the provision of some of those exact same services that we had talked about earlier. Not only will they get assessments, they will get a detailed report out for their building. They will provide basically kind of the full level of concierge type service for a building owner at no cost to the building owner to be able to get onboard benchmarking, collect all their data, make sure everything is 100% accurate, and allow them to have really highly informed decision-making opportunities in the future as they look to pursue building efficiency, water, and electric opportunities as they move ahead. Questions on the RIMP fund?
CJ, just to be clear on this, that the supplemental is going directly to the, to the residents of Aspen?
That is correct. Yep. This is the money that will fund Core the additional $420,000 direct service to folks.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
No comment. I think this is really important work that environmental health is undertaking and I fully support this. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Good evening, City Council Mayor Torrey, Utilities Director. I have with me Cole Langford, Utilities Business Service Manager. Thank you for the time this evening. I want to emphasize that while I'm honored to be presenting today, it's truly the expertise and dedication of the 35 staff that ensure both water and electricity smoothly. In tonight's presentation, I'm addressing the key priorities that council and community want to see with the Utilities Department proposed budget. However, I'm open to suggestions if there are other areas of the department we'd like to focus on in the future at this presentation. The main mission of this department is to deliver safe, reliable, and affordable water and electricity 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with conservation being at the forefront of both these finite resources. I'm excited to explain more tonight what this department does and how this department's work connects with some of the city's goals and values. On the map above, council can get an idea of how big the service territories are for each utility. Both the electric and water funds are enterprise funds, meaning they are self-supporting, government-owned, that rely on selling goods and services to operate. The dark green line is Aspen city limits. The dark red boundary is the area served by city electric, including the downtown Core, original townsite, Burlingame, Ark, Water Campus, Streets, and Parks Department. We are proud to serve our approximately 3,100 customers with 100% renewable energy since 2015 and be an all-underground system. The water service is divided out into seven billing areas and expands out into the county. Each billing area has a different pricing structure to fund their proportional share of the system. The water service includes the airport, Mucha Buttermilk, Red Mountain, Thunderbolt, Highlands, and Eastwood and Oldwood as you're headed out the pass, which equates to around 4,200 customers. Starting first with the water utility, water revenues are made up largely of variable service, meaning gallons of water sold, and demand service, which are related to infrastructure and equipment for the utility. Here's a breakdown of the proposed expenditures for 2025. I'd like to point out the continued dedication to capital investment and sustainable ownership. Much of the infrastructure is nearing the end of its useful life, but we have a dedicated and expert staff that maintains a high-functioning utility. But there will be a continued importance of replacing this infrastructure. Another item to take note of is that the utilities has a 25% reserve as we are self-insured against natural disasters such as drought, fire, shifts in climate, to protect our supply and change in customer behavior. Building on last year's rate study and financial plan, the department is proposing a 5% overall revenue requirement adjustment for the reasons listed on this slide. This adjustment is essential to ensure a healthy water utility in the years to come. In the upcoming slides, we will show the forecasted impact of this adjustment on what a common hypothetical customer may experience for 2025. So I'm happy to discuss the individual components of a customer's bill of council desires. But this example here is a residential downtown customer during the summer months where there is much more water consumption. In the wintertime, these smaller residential homes approach an approximately $40 bill. Again, this is not every month or every customer. This all depends on personal consumption and seasonality. Next is a residential example in the Red Mountain area. This customer requires more infrastructure and at least one pump to deliver service. We see this customer class typically have a bill around $140 to $150 during the off-peak months. Finally, we have a commercial account that would include hotels and businesses. Commercial accounts mostly follow visitation patterns for consumption usage. So another component of the water revenue is connected, is connection or tap fees. Tap fees are designed and collected to ensure that development pays its own way when increasing the size of service or connecting a new service to our water system. Without the revenue from these fees, the costs of expanding and maintaining our water system to meet the needs of new and larger customers fall on existing ratepayers. The department is proposing an 11% increase for tap fees. When comparing Aspen's current 2024 rates with other Colorado utilities that provided information for the average cost of 250,000 gallons sold, we are proud to sit well below half regarding average cost. Moving on into larger capital projects, earlier in the year, council approved the design for Wright's Road cast iron replacement. Design is still on track to be finished this winter with construction to be completed next year. This is the number one break location within the system these past five years.
Justin, a question on that. How, this is a big expenditure. How many people are served by this Wright's Road and it's, seems like a lot of money for a few people?
Yeah. So Ward, the, the direct amount of residents on Wright's Road, there's probably less than 50. But I think it's important to know that we try to lay out the, the water system in a looped fashion. So this piece of infrastructure helps us in emergencies or in downtimes to provide water to other folks either up or down within the water distribution system. Council recently approved the 100% design contract on the water treatment plant project. These items are the functional backbone of the water campus and staff is very much looking forward to this project. We anticipate design drawings to be completed in September of 2025. The department is currently out to bid for a construction manager at risk. We intend to purchase long lead time items and secure a construction contract by the end of 2025. And finally, we have the smaller capital projects and maintenance items to help continue safe and reliable water service to the community. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on any of these specific examples.
I think when Tom Langreen, Dr. Langreen came here at last meeting, that just, that we were going to have a briefing or review of what the water, what chemicals are going in the water? Where do we leave that?
Sure, that is left as something for ideally towards the end of first quarter of 2025 is to bring you our annual quality report. I believe council was contemplating the, an understanding of a recent court ruling around the addition of fluoride as part of the conversation as well. There's nothing in this budget related to it. Most of that work we're able to do up for that work session, we can do in the base budget appropriation.
First quarter 25?
That's what we're targeting. We actually, Justin and I haven't had a chance to talk about it. These probably, and we just, Tyler and I have a meeting later this week that includes it.
Thank you.
And Ward, any member of the public or council member that's interested in our water quality, we have reports posted to our website, Consumer Confidence Report, that reviews all testing and water quality and anything that's added to the water as well.
So there's a brief review regarding the water utility. We are not asking for any additional supplementals or FTEs. And all the information is included in a council, council packet as well. If council doesn't have any questions, we will transition into the electric utility fund. So moving, moving into the electric utility, the 2025 revenue requirements break down with variable service, which is how much electricity a consumer, a customer consumes. And then availability service, which is the infrastructure and equipment costs to serve customers as the two largest revenues for the utility. On the screen, you'll see the estimated expenditures for the electric utility for 2025. The largest expenditure is purchased power. The next largest expense is capital projects as we continue to focus and replace aging infrastructure. The electric utility also completed a 2024 rate study and financial plan. The department is proposing an overall 5.25% revenue requirement adjustment. In the upcoming slides, we will show what a theoretical monthly invoice a customer may expect for 2025. Happy to explain any of the individual components of a customer bill. It's important to point out in this example that the availability charge or fixed charge is not proposed to change for standard electric residential services in 2025. The kilowatt hour is a portion of the bill that a customer can control with usage and conservation. The majority of the city's commercial electric class is the small commercial. These are typically boutiques and small restaurants. This bill would represent a colder month in January where more energy is required. These customers average around half as much consumption in the warmer months as shown in this example. Finally, we have large commercial, which are your large hotels, buildings, and businesses that typically have a lot of infrastructure and mechanical equipment. And again, shown here is a winter, more high-demand month. As electric utilities begin to meet the demands of beneficial electrification, we provide an all-electric residential rate to qualifying customers. The rate structure has 15% wider tiers, allowing customers increased electric consumption within each tier. The utility will continue analysis of consumption trends, all-electric adoption, ways to incentivize this transition, and each customer need as beneficial electrification develops. And additionally, the department still provides all-electric affordable housing and senior rates. Electric community investment fees or ECI fees are designed and collected to ensure that development pays its own way when increasing the size of a service or connecting a new service to our electric system. Without the revenue from these costs, the costs of expanding and maintaining our electric system to meet the needs of new and larger customer service would fall on our ratepayers. It's important to note existing services get credit for ECI fees paid in the past. Staff is proposing a 15% increase for 100 to 400 amp services and proposed 20% increase for 600 amp and larger services. This graph shown is the residential average cost of a kilowatt hour and cents for the United States for this year's existing 2024 rates. We believe Aspen is very competitive compared to other states, including Colorado. We are right under 12 cents for 2024 average retail kilowatt hour sold. In comparing where Aspen sits with other Colorado municipal utilities that have provided information at 700 kilowatt hours, the light green is the city's average 2024 rates for residential. We would consider ourselves in the middle of the pack in this scenario for the utility providers that have responded to the survey. Again, this is the same scenario for 2024, but comparing small commercial customers, we are at or below the middle compared to other utilities that had provided information throughout the state. And finally, we have large commercial. We would, we would consider ourselves competitive in all of these categories, especially the difficulty of providing service in a mountain town being 100% renewable and an all-underground system. being a hundred percent renewable and in all underground system. For supplemental request, Public Service Company of Colorado, sometimes called Piesco or Excel, is currently working on a project named Colorado Power Pathways, which is estimated to cost one point seven to two billion dollars to enable future energy development in eastern Colorado. Due to the city's participation in Piesco's network, there will be a direct pass-through cost to the utility, even though the city will not directly utilize this new network infrastructure. Staff is actively working with Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska, the city's wholesale electric provider, to continue providing and forecasting this yearly increase in transmission cost. Staff currently estimate increases between fifteen to twenty-five percent for the Power Pathways project annually for the next five years, in addition to the normal service rate increases. The city of Aspen, Glenwood Springs and Center Colorado are working together to challenge the fairness of this rate increase for utilities that receive no direct benefit from this project. Staff will continue to update council and community as this project and its costs develop in the years to come.
John?
Is, is the Colorado Power Pathways project, the large wind turbine project on the eastern plains?
It could be for wind. It could be they're labeling it any renewable. But that is probably the majority of that source that is going to be connected to Power Pathways.
John, the Power Pathways project is specific to the transmission infrastructure that's being planned, designed and constructed. So it doesn't actually inclusion resources at this.
Thanks.
Moving into capital project, the, the city of Aspen electric distribution system consists of thirty-plus-year-old electric cable directly buried in the ground. This cable is approaching the end of its design lifespan. City staff just finished year three of cable and conduit replacement and is focusing on the downtown core businesses first. This segment from Puppy Smith to Red Brick was originally planned in out years within the project, but this segment experienced a few outages in late twenty-three into early twenty-four. So staff reprioritized this section of circuit. Council approved the design earlier this year and staff will complete this stretch in twenty twenty-five. Phase one of Pepke Park to City Market electric distribution replacement project was completed this year. Phase two will be designed in twenty-five and construction in twenty twenty-six. I want to highlight during phase one of this project how much coordination between city projects, city departments and private utilities that were done to help minimize disruption to the community as well as provide economies of scale. There was multiple coordination efforts with electric staff, with IT, parks, environmental health with the EV chargers, engineering with the carbon gutter. So quite a success for the city as a whole. Design for Coke to City Market electric distribution replacement will begin in twenty-five. Construction will begin after completion of the Pepke Park to City Market circuit that I just mentioned. With these cable and conduit replacement projects, our department wants to thank the community and businesses throughout as we know they are disruptive, but when completed make our electric system safer and more reliable for thirty-plus years to come. The transformer you see here has been in place since the hydroelectric facility at Rude I was built in the nineteen eighties. So along with other planned improvements in the future, this transformer will be replaced to help extend its life out for the next thirty-plus years. These transformers have a very long lead time, so we want to get them replaced prior to any failures. And these are projects and maintenance budget items that help the annual need to maintain a reliable utility. Happy to answer any specific questions on these projects council may have.
Any questions on capital projects?
So this concludes the electric utility and utilities department budget presentation. Again, everything tonight is provided to council in a packet as well. Utilities will be back in front of council in November for first reading on the twelfth and second reading on the thirteenth of Title twenty-five for twenty twenty rates to take in effect on January first. Any questions, comments, or anything council you would like addressed for November?
This is a really foundational question about municipality supplying electricity versus a co-op like Holy Cross. And it, look at the cost comparisons in, the cost is substantially below Aspen's. And, I mean, this could be. Why are we, why are we delivering electricity when Holy Cross could do it for less? And I, I don't, I mean, I create everything that the electric utility does in undergrounding and a hundred percent renewable, but this gets to a question of the size of government, what should be government be doing? And municipality supplied electricity seems to be there more, more municipality supplying electricity than co-ops. But when the cost to the, to the consumer is lower with Holy Cross, why are, why are we delivering electricity?
So Ward, I jump in here and respectfully disagree significantly lower cost, was competitive. In fact, some of our KWH rates are, are below what Holy provides. That being said, the benefits of having a municipally-owned utility are basically around community choice. Municipal utilities allow the elected officials, the decision makers to make choices for the community that wouldn't necessarily be representative, presented in a co-op model like Holy Cross. So we're able to pivot, offer rates for all affordable housing, offer specialized rates for our senior citizens in the community, offer a hundred percent renewable electricity, things like that at a policy level. At the council table, those decisions have been made and then implemented by staff. So that's the value we see for the community. We also feel that because our staff is local and they're on call twenty-four seven, they're able to respond and provide a higher level of risk than other utilities in the state. And I think our reliability proves that and our, our folks, our members of this community are served by that utility as well.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the Colorado rate study residential and all of those in the yellow where Holy Cross comes in are below what Aspen delivers. And I understand and appreciate the, the response to community values. I mean, this is a lot of infrastructure. Where could Holy Cross be doing this? Would a co-op be paying for all of these infrastructure improvements and this Holy Cross underground all of there? I'm just trying to, a true picture of what the, the value of a municipality delivered electric utility is versus a co-op.
Sure. Yeah, and I think you hit it on the head. You know, we operate based on values. Other utility models such as investor, owner, co-op operate with multiple different pieces that, that they have to balance. So they might be more profit focused or certain program focused, were focused on the programs and products that city council directs to be focused on. So as Justin mentioned, we're a hundred percent underground system. That's not necessarily a choice that other utilities would make because that's not the most cost-effective way to serve customers, but we place aesthetics in this community in a high value. We also place reliability at a high value. And so that underground system serves Aspen well and those were decisions made at a policy level at this table.
Yeah, and I, I know in Aspen's defense in twenty fifteen, one hundred percent renewable, and I don't know if any of the, the co-ops are a hundred percent renewable. Holy Cross is probably the most aggressive that I know of in, in pursuing that, but there's still a lot of dirty electricity out there.
Yeah, and I'd just also add, you know, we feel very fortunate to have a sister partner utility like Holy Cross. I think the broader valley and the broader region that they serve is generally aligned with some of the value we have and practices we have. However, we've been able to serve as a leader in that space because of the vision of, of council and previous councils. And we, we think that that continues to value it to the community.
And Justin, the lumberyard is going to be a city utility?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other question?
Just a comment. This primary goal was resilience, be resilient. And this speaks directly to that, making our electric system and our waterworks more resilient. So good work. Thank you.
My only question is that after, thought we were on a five-year cost recovery model of steady increases. And I thought this would be the last, the first year of not seeing that cost recovery model play out. And here we are with five point two five percent increase. And what can we expect for the next every year?
So I think we would love to come here and have any rate adjustments and keep it the same for the community. There, there's been a number of inflationary pressures, contractor costs, material costs. The, the right thing to do would be to make these proposed adjustments in real time rather than catch, catch up comes later that maybe, you know, a more impactful percentage increase.
Do we still have a turbine in storage?
Yes.
Do we continually look for ways to monetize that and figure out how that can add back to our portfolio?
Yeah, we, we have that on a couple of different, for out there for purchase. We, we've had different entities, professionals reach out, but no real interest in purchase to date.
Thanks. Do we anticipate a five percent increase every year?
So Tori, we've undertaken, this is the second rate studies I think we've undertaken with this council, our, our members of this council. Cole and Justin, Greg, new year two of this last round. So we generally undertake those risk studies in five-year increments because we feel like looking at an individual year basis over five years gives us the best snapshot of our revenue requirements. As I mentioned, we, we look at the year by year and look at what inflationary pressures are doing, what the marketplace is doing, wholesale electric marketplace, et cetera. And so I guess to give you a snapshot of the future, I couldn't say exactly what that's going to be, but we have generally been able to keep this in single-digit type rate increases, something that is hopefully well below inflationary numbers that the average citizen is seeing in the rest of their daily life. We're proud to do that. We know that's still an impact, but that's generally what we think the next few years look like based on the economics we're seeing at a national level.
It just makes me pause and wonder, you know, is this a more efficient way for us to do this for our community? But let's be honest, it's a conversation.
One more question for you. The PPA power purchase agreements that we have with mean, have they capped the energy costs where? How, how far out do those contracts go?
So the purchase agreements we hold with mean and other entities have various contract lifespans. Some are ten years, some are twenty, some are even more than that. Generally, those long-term contracts have allowed us to purchase power at rates below what the wholesale markets are doing on an average daily basis. So that's advantageous to the city. And I would put our portfolio up against almost anybody in that regard. Those contracts, however, do have an escalation factor between one and a few percent per year because running a power generation operation does cost money and does get increasingly more expensive as inflation is applied to those entities as well. So those costs increase, but we, we have relatively fixed costs in that regard.
Relatively fixed, but still increasing rates is somewhat dependent upon what cost of energy is.
Different than other utilities, but yes, are probably our biggest factor these, these days is our capital infrastructure and then things like transmission costs as you saw from our supplemental request.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Cole.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's opportunity for different distribution for cost increases. Of times our policy in Aspen has been about excessive use over household need and stuff like that. So again, as we see five point five percent increases on an annual basis to those that are running efficiently in households on the bottom rung of our user spectrum, I wonder if there's a better way to distribute some of the cost increases that we see. And I continue to ask for, you guys continue to look at that stuff. Any other questions on electric summary? Thank you much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
All right, I'm moving to five presented departments tonight, starting with parking and transportation. Transportation fund, sixteen revenues, just over seven point one million against total uses of ten point nine eight million. The majority of that is for mass transit with our RAFTA contract and then alternative transit, including the downtowner, we cycle. There's one more. Card to go. Thank you. They do have supplemental requests that was presented on opening night related to we cycle to purchase thirty-five additional e-bikes for the fleet and then our share of increased operational support for them. And then finally, capital, their large capital item for twenty twenty-five is the purchase of a new all-electric bus for the RAFTA fleet along with Ruby Park facility maintenance and bus stop improvements. Any questions on transportation?
I think so. Ward?
We cycle, cap the speed of those e-bikes at fifteen miles per hour.
I'd be interested in the work we put in, in this department within the city when it comes to first and last mile solutions. And it, I, I think about this every year when we start, when we talk about expanding the we cycle program and such. And there was a suggestion made to me by some other folks about a city sponsor, and, and this is not for immediate, but just for thought and maybe, Sherlyn, come on up. We love seeing you. I just had two, two thoughts and two items I wanted to share. One, somebody was recommending a subsidized program in the city for commuters, right? So we're not buying somebody the top of the line, not making e-bikes to go out to the hollow trails and stuff, but true commuters. So, so that's one thing I wanted to say is, is I don't know if we've thought about that at all or, or if you need any agreement from council that they're interested in anything like that. But the other thing that comes around, and the reason I, I bring that one up is because we cycle is great, but we cycle requires docking, right? And first and last mile solutions in our valley could be maybe more successful if people have the ability to be connected for their first and last mile, meaning from their home to transit. And that's one of the things that we cycle can accomplish in some places where their, where their docking stations are available, but not in places. So years ago, when we were talking about even venturing into agreements with we cycle and, and, and going with that program, you know, the other suggestion came up is that for the amount of dollars that we spend, we literally could buy every single person a bicycle. And so I'm not suggesting we buy everybody a bike, but the concept of town bikes was floated around at that time too, which are the kind of where you could take it home, where you could have it overnight, where you could use it. Anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there as we keep talking, whether it's RAFTA, the county, you name it, we're all talking about first and last mile solutions. And just wondering if there's either a, a bike purchase subsidy program that we might want to look into or a bike share program that can actually serve people door to bus, bus to door kind of thing.
I would say a couple of things. First off, one thing you mentioned about purchasing bikes or angels. With our upcoming report and study that we've been working on that we'll bring to you in twenty twenty-five, that's why I don't even look at is bike rebates. Those are popular around the country. There are pros and cons to those types of programs. So we'll bring that to you and you can review this further.
Great.
At that time, dockless programs, which are leading programs that don't have docks, are something we've looked into in the community about three or four years now. And we didn't see a lot of support for that. So we haven't looked into true docks programs, meaning large D's of bikes or scooters that could roam wherever they'd like. But an e-bike rebate program or something along those lines might get at what you're looking for. So we'll bring that to you.
Thank you, Simon. Ward?
Yeah, I support that. I think it has a bike rebate program and I think all the we cycles are free for a half hour. So.
I think that's a good idea, Tori, to some kind of, I mean, maybe the city could buy a bunch of e-bikes and sell them at half, half cost or, I don't know. But a rebate program for e-bikes that don't go towards miles per hour.
Yeah, and, and I don't know. I just know that I spend a lot of time on first and last mile. As a matter of fact, today, through the RAFTA board, I was filling out the Google Calendar survey for our first. As a matter of fact, today through the RFTA board, I was filling out the Google Calendar survey for our first meeting, which is going to be a first and last mile subcommittee from the RFTA board. And I believe we're going to probably be meeting, I want to say next Friday afternoon or something. We were very interested, it just came up at our last board meeting and we're very interested in kind of getting around and just throwing things against the wall. So I don't know the answer either. I just do feel that there is a first and last mile connection in our valley that could be tackled and made better. You know, we're a very interesting valley in the sense that we have a solid trunk line that goes forty-five miles from here to Glenwood. But off of that, you've just got offshoots and branches and arms that are difficult for those that are choosing not to drive. Getting that last leg is tough. So anyway, I don't have the answers, but thank you so much for looking into some of those kinds of answers.
Mayor. I know you reference the slides a lot, but I didn't know if the council has been peeking. One thing that does highlight in the book back, this has a really large fund out currently. I do want to point out obviously that we have future bus replacements. Some of those are fairly pricey when you're talking about all electric buses in the future. So some of that healthy reserve, if you will, will be there for that. But the other aspect to be aware of obviously is there's cost escalation, escalation happening with our partner RFTA. That does start to pace quickly sometimes and sometime might outpace the, the rate of growth on some of the, the revenue sources for our fund, mitigated taxes and whatnot. So just something to be aware of in the future as the council looks at how to utilize funds.
Yeah, am I reading this correctly? That twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five projected opening balance of twenty-four point five, twenty-four point six million dollars?
That's right. During COVID, we had some benefit from the, the CARES fund and balance. And the tax revenue was still coming in and we just were able to, that paced actually at a faster rate than some of our expenses for a while. So that also added to fund balance. So we actually built a fairly healthy reserve over the last number of years. You can already see that now you're starting to that down as well on some of these big replacements.
Oh, good. Sorry, Tori.
And then secondly, I would just add to that, are utilizing dollars from this fund for this to Aspen? Because there is a significant public transit component right now to the plan.
Thank you.
Parking Fund, twenty-five revenues of almost five point one million versus total uses of five point eight. Parking enforcement is their largest operating expense along with administrative and facilities costs. Their small supplemental, again, mentioned on opening kickoff night is the pass-through cost for the increasing costs related to our towing contract. High lining capital, downtown core parking improvements, including potential technology upgrades, fleet for parking and Rio Grande parking garage, some pups and other garage maintenance. Questions on parking? I will also mention the tie between parking and transportation as there's an annual transfer from parking revenues to the transportation fund to help keep that fund healthy. As Pete mentioned, you know, we've been lucky the last few years with some federal dollars influx. But that transfer has been about a million dollars a year. For twenty twenty-five, we're projecting to increase the transfer to one point five million.
Do we know in parking, what are, what are, what goes uncollected on an annual basis? Do we, do we know those numbers these days?
Yes, we know them and no, we don't have them right here.
Okay. I'd be interested to see them. Couple of times we've, we've talked about different strategies for capturing the, some lost revenues from unpaid parking tickets. And I would love to revisit a strategy or two for that if it's worth the squeeze, but I don't know what that number is. That's on parking. And then I was wondering about our opportunities for either smaller in-town route buses or switch to electric in-town buses.
So Mr. Mayor, our parking and transportation staff are working on the project Aspen gets us there. And we are planning in the first quarter of twenty-five to come back in front of council to holistically give you guys a shot of what that might look like, whether that's increasing routes or decreasing routes in certain areas, augmenting. And we want to do that holistically because there's obviously budgetary ramifications to doing any and all of those options.
Awesome. Thank you.
In the fall supplemental, a piece related to shuttles for the in-town routes. And based on current grant opportunities, at least today, we cannot be eligible for some grants. We look at all-electric, so that would be, you know, exclude us from some other grant opportunities to pay for those shuttles.
You know, and I, the reason I ask it is I still have the experience when we see midday underutilized capacity. And I've spoken with RFTA before about trying to move to smaller, more fuel-efficient vehicles at times where our routing is just not at capacity. For various reasons over the years, that, you know, whether it's vehicle availability, whether it's driver availability, this, that and the other. So I'm just wondering, do you still have any opportunities for reducing our costs and being just as effective as we know? We will have more of that conversation in Q1, it sounds like.
All right. Next will be Stormwater Fund.
Awesome. Stormwater. I think it's, I think it's last.
The remaining housing funds as well.
Oh, darn, okay.
They'll be quick.
That's why I was really excited about Stormwater.
Fairly status quo and we have spoken to them and their asphalt projects multiple times. Twenty twenty-five revenues of two point four million against total uses of two point nine million. Stormwater does have supplemental requests for phase two of their system assessment with phase one being approved in twenty twenty-four as well as some increased operational costs for annual stormwater vault and pipe cleaning and maintenance. On the capital side, they have a stormpipe lining project, west end stormwater infrastructure replacement and an update to the urban runoff management planned. And then just the footnote that we speak to often, the capital plan reflects current funding availability and not full system and infrastructure needs. Any questions on Stormwater?
Stormpap, pipe lining, does that mean we could put a lining down on a CMP without having to dig up the street?
So lining projects are a way to reduce the amount of excavation that's required. However, you have to, there, there is some excavation still required to create access points, periodic frequencies along the pipeline. So I don't want to make it sound like there's, there's no excavation, but it's certainly limits the impact of the community. And that's, that's one of the reasons that we're exploring that as an option.
Cool. Thank you.
All right, and the housing funds? City-owned fund, total sources of one point five million versus total uses of one point eight. I'd say the two highlights in their budget would be the asphalt project at Trust Scott. And as Matthew mentioned in the Apptia presentation, the playground equipment replacement. Questions on Trust Scott? Trust Scott Two is a tax credit property. Total sources for twenty twenty-five estimated at a little under one point five million versus total uses of also one point five million. Again, their share of the parking lot and playground equipment along with some smaller capital maintenance projects for twenty twenty-five.
Just come back to Trust Scott Two. This is one of the ones that we were looking at selling?
So I did do some outreach to the individual that helped us with the tax credits on ACI. And I'm trying to get a meeting with him just to have some conversation around that topic. So we are starting just a soft exploration right now.
Thank you.
Moralt is city-owned. Total revenues twenty twenty-five, one point seven million versus total uses of just under one point eight. Again, the asphalt project being there large along with some smaller maintenance dollars for exterior door and window replacements. Questions on Moralt? And finally, ACI, another tax credit property. Total revenues of three quarters of a million dollars versus total uses in twenty twenty-five of eight hundred thousand dollars primarily. About half of it will be for the, the asphalt project at ACI. And that is it for this evening. Next week will be our last budget work session with departments presenting Employee Housing Fund, Employee Benefits Fund, Tourism Promotion, as well as Finance presenting Public Education, IT, Kids First, Debt Service. And then we will do our full budget wrap-up.
And council, our hope would be on the twenty-eighth to be receiving direction on, on any other perhaps adjustments. Because it does come, this budget does come back to you number second meeting for, the budget is adopted by resolution with public hearing. And so it would be beneficial to have as much input as possible so that the final numbers that are put in the packet on November twelfth, through our understanding of council's directions. Sorry, stroppily.
Thank you, Matt. Nothing gets me more excited than talking about corrugated metal pipes.
It's an unusual fetish.
Thank you. As always, thank you to Grassroots TV. We will be back tomorrow evening with a regularly scheduled meeting that starts at five PM. And of course, we start our meetings with public comments. If you're interested in addressing council, please join us here tomorrow at City Hall at five o'clock.
Was that not part of tonight?
I thought that was done.
Was that in that? Oh, just the, I, I thought it was too, but it was listed as a separate item. That's why I wanted to ask. The, the.
Utility.
Proposed rates.
We did, we did cover those this evening. We provided you examples of that. And then it's additional information is in the packet that was reissued with today's an information-only memo. So yes, it would, we would go forward with those rates as presented because it matches the rating formula to meet your capital needs.
So we've talked about it.
We've talked about two other times before tonight.
I thought so. It's, it's just a separate agenda item, so I just wanted to make sure.